Okay, thank you. Mahopac, welcome to the Tuesday, February 28th special meeting. Let's, please, can I get a motion to open the meeting, please? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Let's stand to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, with whose hands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, tonight, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out, the folks that are here, thanks for listening, for those who are watching at home. This is a public hearing for exemptions, for the three exemptions that we're going to talk, four exemptions that we're going to talk about, is the public hearing on the tax exemptions effective in 23, the 2023-2024 school year. There are going to be four of them that we're going to talk about, the alternative veterans' exemption, the senior citizens exemptions, and persons with disabilities, which is the same financial impact, and we'll go through that, and then the volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. So with that, if we could put the, oh, so let me present. Okay, so let's go on to the first one. So you've probably seen this slide multiple times. This is the veterans exemptions levels. The current Maupac Central School District level right now is that top line there, wartime service is $12,000, combat zone is $8,000, disability is $40,000. What we'll be voting on tonight is to move that for the 2023-2024 school year to $27,000 wartime, $18,000 combat zone, and $90,000 disability. As you can see, next to bottom line is the town and county level is at 54 wartime, 36 combat zone, and $180,000 disability. Okay, just go to the next slide, there you go. So the impact of the veterans exemption increase to the, if we go all the way up to the town and county level, based on a $500,000 assessed value home property, would add $116.21 to the school tax per house, another $3.31 for the library tax, which gives us a total of slightly under $120 per year. What that calculates out to be for the total tax dollars reallocated amongst other non-veteran houses is slightly under $950,000. So the resolution tonight is that we're moving these exemptions to, the wartime exemption is going to move from $12,000 to $27,000, the combat exemption $8,000 to $18,000, the disability exemption $40,000 to $90,000. So if you do very simple math, we're moving a third of the way, we will result in an approximate $40 increase to the taxpayer if you have a $500,000 assessed value, again, for the 23-24 school year. So what's going to happen is, at the end of the, we're going to get additional numbers of how the, actually, what actually happens in October of 2023, so we'll have a separate discussion that's going to take place in the fall of 2023 regarding potential additional increase to go to the town and county level, whether we do it in a stepwise fashion or we just go all the way through. All right, next slide. Now we're moving to senior citizens and persons with disabilities exemption. So right now, the exemption allowance is up to 50, is up to 50% assessed value exempted. Current income limit is $29,000 for 50% assessed value exemption, and a sliding scale for exemption with an income limit of $37,400, and that would get a 5% assessed value exemption. The new income limit is $50,000 for 50% assessed value exemption, and a sliding scale for exemption with an income limit of $58,399. That's a 5%, with a 5% assessed value exemption. So on the next slide, now, the next slide just shows what the Putnam County is implementing, using a three-year phase-in process. If you can see what we're, the top bullet point there is what we're going to vote on tonight. I'm not going to go through the other couple of steps, but you can see what they're planning out to do in '23, '24, and '25. Since this is income-based, again, Putnam County has, basically has no data on this. It's not possible to determine the amount of the financial impact, tax shift from eligible homeowners to non-eligible homeowners. So what we're going to do, or what we're going to vote on tonight, excuse me, senior citizens exemption and the persons with disabilities exemption for Board of Ed consideration is increase the income limit to $40,000 for 50% assessed value exemption, phasing out at $48,399 for 5% assessed value exemption. And again, in the fall, probably around October, November, when we'll have actual data, numbers of people who are, who will be taking advantage of this exemption, and we'll get to see what the impact will be. And that's what we'll be voting on tonight. All right, now we move on to the volunteer exemption. So local governments and school districts in New York State can opt to grant a reduction on the amount of property taxes paid by volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. It's up to 10% assessed value exempted, minimum service requirement two to five years of service, and again, we don't have any idea of how much this is going to impact us, a financial impact, as we said earlier. So what are we proposing tonight, and we're going to vote on tonight, is provide an exemption in the amount of 3% of assessed value to volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers who have a minimum service of two years. Again, we're going to talk about, we're going to revisit this issue back in the fall of 2023, potentially additional increase to the maximum level or intermediary level. All right, this is the summary, the veterans, so there's actually four different resolutions we're doing tonight, because we have to separate out, separate out the senior citizen exemption and the persons with disabilities exemption, even though they're identical. So what we're voting on tonight is the veterans exemption, you can see, $27,000 wartime, $18,000 combat, $90,000 disability, then moving on to the senior citizen exemption and the persons with disabilities, $40,000 income level, income limit with a 50% of assessed value, and the volunteer exemption, it's 3% of assessed value, two years of service, and again, if adopted tonight, once we vote, the implementation will be in the 2023-2024 school year. This point, excuse me, this point, that's the presentation. This is a public hearing, therefore, if the public wishes to, if the public wishes to comment, they can. Just, I know the folks that are in the room are all good folks, and just maintain the public decorum appropriate for the school, address the President, the Board, conduct yourself in a civil manner. I'm not going to go through the rest of it. So if anybody has any comments, you can come up to the podium if you have comments. You don't have to, but if you want, you can. Anybody else? Anybody want to get up? No? Okay. All right, if that's the case, I'm just going to give anybody else one more chance. Oh, well, good. All right. Well, I appreciate you guys, folks, coming out tonight to join us. With that, we're going to move on to the actual, sure, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. So my question is just to confirm, because we were talking about that this was going to be for one year, and we would re-review it in November, is that still correct?
Correct. That's so, yeah, and that's what I was trying to say every single time. See, it's exactly right, Lucy. So what's going to happen is, we're going to, we're basically going to vote for the first year of the, well.
Well, for us to see, where is everything?
Twenty-three, twenty-four. So, and right now, the impact, the only impact that we have in terms of real numbers that we were able to get is for the veterans exemption, which we expect, it's an estimate, is a $40 impact for the 23-24 school year.
So what was the 120 that you showed on the PowerPoint?
The 120 is if we went to the, if the school district went to where the town and the county is.
Oh, I see.
That was the 120. So 120 divided by three, because we've kind of, we've basically done a third of it, is that's where you get the 40.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm sorry, I didn't include the board. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. With that, we're going to begin with the voting process. We're going to do a roll call vote, because.
Melody has to record it, and, I mean, I don't think she's literally going to have to run across the street to the, to the town, but it might as well be that way. So, because this is a kind of like, we're going to spread out the duties here. So Adam, Mr. Vice President, why don't you take the first one?
Good evening, everyone. This is the person with disabilities tax exemption, tax exemption. Pursuant to real property tax law 495(c), which provides for a partial exemption from taxation on residential property, we are amending our prior resolution to include the increase in income eligibility. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Mahopac Central School District hereby amend the income eligibility limits for the partial exemption previously authorized pursuant to the schedule in our resolution, and be it further resolved that this resolution will be effective immediately, and that the school district clerk will provide a certified copy of this resolution to the assessors for the taxing jurisdiction located in the school district.
Okay, so let, I guess after motion, right? Motion? All right, yeah. Go after motion, after motion, right? All right, so, okay. All right, so I'm going to motion. Motion to accept this resolution. All right, second, that's fine, and then let's do the roll call. Jonathan, why don't you start, please?
Aye. Yes.
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 Tanner?
Tanner.
She dropped that.
All right, there he is. All right, we see, we see him. Can he just give us the high sign? Tanner, if you could just give us the, oh.
Okay, so you can hear him if you just move the buzzer.
No, I can't. Oh, I think I heard him.
So Tanner.
He said yes?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So Melody, does that motion pass? Sorry, does that?
Motion carries.
All right, very good. All right, let's move on to the second one.
Senior cit, here we go. Senior citizen tax exemption pursuant to real property tax law 467, which provides for a partial exemption for qualified homeowners at least 65 years of age from taxation on residential property. We are amending our prior resolution to include the increase in income eligibility. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Mahopac Central School District hereby amend the income eligibility limits for the partial exemption previously authorized pursuant to the schedule in our resolution, and be it further resolved that this resolution will be effective immediately, and that the school district clerk will provide a certified copy of this resolution to the assessors for the taxing jurisdiction located in the school district. I offer this motion.
I second the motion. Let's do the roll call. Why don't we start, Dave, from your side?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, okay, great.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, terrific. All right, my turn, here we go. Veterans tax exemption pursuant to the real property tax law 458, which provides for a partial exemption from taxation on residential property owned by qualified veterans, their spouses, the unremarried surviving spouses of veterans, and the parents of a child that died in the line of duty to the United States Armed Forces during a time of war. We are amending our prior resolution to increase the exemption as follows. One, the basic, wartime exemption shall equal to 15% of the assessed value of such property, provided however that such exemption may not exceed the lesser of, A, $27,000, or B, the product of $27,000 multiplied by the latest state equalization rate for the assessing unit for such property is situated. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Maupac Central School Board hereby amend the resolution, and that be further resolved that this resolution will be, will be effective immediately, and that the school district clerk will provide a certified copy of this resolution to the assessor for the taxing jurisdiction located in the school district. Can I get a motion to, for, motion to vote on the resolution? Second, please. Okay. And, Dave, why don't we start with you again?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Tanner, give us a thumbs up? Tanner, a thumbs up? Okay, Tanner. All right, next is the volunteer for tax, the volunteer tax exemption pursuant to real property tax law 466, at which provides for a partial exemption from taxation on residential property owned by qualified volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers, or a qualified spouse of up to 10% of the assessed value of such property as so determined by a governing body of, governing body of a city, village, town, school district, fire district, or county after a public hearing. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Maupac Central School District adopt the following, the following residential property owned by a, sorry, adopt the following. Residential real property owned by an enrolled member of an incorporated volunteer fire company, volunteer fire department, or incorporated volunteer ambulance service shall be exempt from taxation and assessments levied by the school district to the extent of 3% of the assessed value of such property, exclusive of special assessments, subject to the requirements set forth in this resolution. Eligibility must include the requirements set forth in this exemption in this resolution, excuse me. The full resolution is in board docs. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Maupac Central School District hereby adopt the resolution, and be it further resolved that this resolution will be effective immediately, and that the school district clerk will provide a certified copy of this resolution to the assessors for the taxing jurisdiction located in the school district. All right, can I ask for a motion to vote on the resolution? All right, second, second, please, second. All right, let's, Dave, why don't we do it from your side?
Yes.
All right, Tanner with the hand up. All right.
Motion carries.
All right, terrific. Motion carries. All right, so now we're going to do another, another resolution here. This is regarding the Falls School. Very, very briefly, the Falls was identified previously as a separate school, therefore, we did not meet certain criteria. However, it is not a separate school, it has a program there, which is basically an annex of the middle school, therefore, we are now, we're basically fixing that assessment, fixing it so that it will, it will be treated as such, and not a separate school, but an annex of the middle school. So let, let me read the resolution here. Falls Academy, whereas the superintendent is recommending that the Falls Academy be closed as a separate school, and any enrolled students be reregistered as students attending the Maupac Middle School, but who will be housed for instructional purposes in an annex of the Maupac Middle School to be located in the building that currently is occupied by the Falls Academy in the 23-24 school year. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education approves the recommendation of the superintendent to close the Falls Academy as the school effective June 30 of 2023, and further authorizes the superintendent to file the necessary paperwork with the Commissioner of Education to revoke the registration of the Falls Academy with the Board of Regents. And can I get a motion to approve, please?
Will we have a discussion?
Sure. That's a question, sure.
It's the first I'm hearing of this, right? So what's the impact on the 20 kids or so that are in this?
There is, there is no impact on it. So what happened is, we were, it was designated, there was a filing done, that it was designated as a separate school, and it did not meet certain requirements, and we were given a, I forgot the term that was used, but maybe we were told that the school was out of compliance when it's really not its own school, it's just a separate program, as you know, Dave, it's a separate program for kids with special needs that are in the middle, in the middle of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So that, out of compliance, we pushed back on that and fought it, and they, and the, basically, the New York State Educational Department said, yeah, you're right, just re, 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 reclassify, thank you, reclassify the school as an annex of the middle school, and then we'll be fine, so.
But it's simply semantics, right? We're not changing the program.
It's essentially someone earlier in the, you know, maybe two years ago, I'm not sure when, basically classified that school as a school, and as a school, we did not meet certain requirements, and were therefore deemed out of compliance. So this is just basically, basically fixing that. There's nothing happening to the kids, they're not moving, nothing's happening, it's basically just an administrative error that was.
Is there a financial impact?
No, there's no financial impact, all right, so let me, all right, I'll read the note, thank you, Melody. Since we only house a special, this is from, notes from the superintendent, we are moving forward with the closing of Maupac Falls Schools, in a previous update, I shared with you, we were exploring this option, since we only house a special education program in this building, we can, we can request, which is what this is, the New York State Education Department remove the beds code. Okay, so there was a beds code attached to the school, and that creates all sorts of, you know, bureaucracy associated with the Falls School, and thus, and thus, close the school effective June 30 of 2023. In order to do this, we need the Board to approve a resolution. This will be included in the today's, today's meeting. Yeah, so, well, we just get asked about the students, so the students, all right, nothing's happening to the students.
So my question is, is that school has been in that type of running, it's probably about five to seven years, so how are we classifying it prior years that now we have a problem? And this is the first time we're really discussing it as a board, so I would ask to table it so that we could discuss this at our next work session, because I think, as a full board, we should discuss the implications.
I think, I think that.
I would second that table, I would second that motion, because.
Is it time sensitivity?
It is, there is a time sens, so I'm not going to lay this on, I think there's a time sensitivity that we have to do prior to tomorrow, but is that, is that accurate?
I, I just, I definitely have no confidence voting to close what's titled as a school without having a public discussion on it and being able to ask questions of it. And if it's been operating this way for years, I don't like throwing a resolution on a few hours before it's got to be filed, without a public discussion, and without having any notes like what you seem to have.
You have the same notes, Jonathan. This was in, this was in the board update that we get on a weekly basis.
And, and then we would be asking questions like this when we would have a public session, we'd have a work session, we would have this discussion.
So what, so what happens if it does not happen today?
I, I don't know, this, this is not, I, I don't know.
It's just that that school has been in that capacity, I would say it's at least seven years, and it's been a school that serviced many students as.
But it's not going away, so, you see, it's not, nothing's changing, I think that's the.
Well, it doesn't say that here, it kind of like says we're closing something, and I, I'm just, I'm reluctant whenever I hear close.
We're closing the designation as a school, it's now going to be created as a program. So for example, a program that's in the high school, right, so the, what's that called? That's not a separate school, right? That's just a program, what's that called, the?
Well, I guess my question is, since it was there so many years, why are we running into a problem now? Like, what happened years prior? So I guess, I wish we had that little bit of a discussion to really understand what has changed in the state, changed how it's classified things, or?
The change is that we were, we were, we were given a note from the New York State that it had a beds code, so I guess if you have a beds code, you are, you are designated as a school. So it is not a school, it is a program for special kid, for special ed kids. Okay, so she just, she just, okay, it needs approval, this is from Ms. Tona, it needs approval tomorrow, deadline is March 1st, attorney drafted resolution, learned this last week, spoke to the State Department of Education, we will become a target district if we want. Do you want me to call in to answer questions? Do you want her to call?
So does a timing issue to it, right? That's why it's not tonight.
Yeah, well, you know, and unfortunately, even with, even with the ones we just voted in, that was a timing issue too. I mean, less than, a little more than a week ago, we had different information than we had a week ago, and I think, so is she going to call in?
Right, but these other programs, we've been kind of talking about it, and as a board, we understood what the implications were.
All right, so let's do this, let's just take a five-minute recess, and we'll try to get Ms. Tona on the phone, and then we'll get some answers to the board. Okay, so let, I don't have my nice big, so let's, a motion to recess, please. Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay. You can stick around, guys, but.
Thanks for coming.
All in favor? Okay, so I'm going, thank you to our esteemed superintendent, who's under the weather, and gave us some information here, so we're going to proceed with the resolution, I'm going to read it from. I'm going to read it from the beginning. Falls Academy, whereas the superintendent is recommending that the Falls Academy be closed as a separate school, and any enrolled students be reregistered as students attending the Maipac Middle School, but who will be housed for instructional purposes in an annex of the Maipac Middle School to be located in the building that currently is occupied by the Falls Academy the 2023-24 school year. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the recommendation of the superintendent to close the Falls School, Falls, excuse me, the Falls Academy as a school effective June 30th, 2023, and further authorizes the superintendent to file the necessary paperwork with the Commissioner of Education to revoke the registration of the Falls Academy with the Board of Regents. Can I get a motion to approve that, please? Approve the resolution? Second, please. Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, the motion passes? Yes, motion carries. He's gone, right? All right. It's just us and the press. Okay, so, with that, thank you, I want to thank the board just for 10 seconds. We, basically, a week ago, we got news, new information, and we turned around, and we met the deadline, we're meeting the deadline for the March 1st deadline to do the right thing for a specific type of population. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody here for weathering the perceived storms and the storms and the weather, and I'm really proud of the work that we do all the time, but especially in situations like this where we have to meet these crazy deadlines. So, thank you. All right, with that, can I get a motion to close the meeting? Second, please. All in favor? All right, good night.